At this time, we'll have the end location by board member down there along with all of our pledge of allegiance.
Stand please. Right. Oh heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you ever stored in us. We ask you to continue to guide and lead us in the right direction. Bestest Board, oh heavenly Father, best the ones, the people that are here tonight, oh heavenly Father, best our school system, oh heavenly Father, all our leadership, oh heavenly Father, that they can do the right thing and take care of our kids. We know that it's a big task, but with positive attitude, we can move forward. We thank God for this community and we look forward to a good year. These are our blessed new actions. In His name. Amen.
Amen.
Forward march.
Please remain standing as the contact is called. March on, march. Forward march. The face. Present, arms. Man, close present. Close, close. Order, arms. Close. Present. Attention, the food. Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Present, arms. Order, arms. Right, face. Forward march. Mr. Sanfenero.
Present.
Ms. Hayline. Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Berry.
Present.
Ms. Cooper.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Shellen.
Present.
Six present, one absent. Thank you.
President, present.
Adoption of the agenda.
My president, my president, I had the ash item to the gym. Global monitoring vision of student learning and graduate profile.
That will go on a constant agenda item, D E. Or we'll just make it D F. It is the tune program. Would you like to come up now?
It's what our educator partners are doing. It will come out of the collective committee meeting that we had. It was just a little step off of me. I was in a position to talk about it. In my life. In favor of this board on this.
This is the tune progress monitoring initiative 1.3 and vision of student learning and graduate profile initiative 1.1. And we'll add that as consistent agenda item 3F.
3F?
Yes.
So, Mr. Bo.
So, there's a question.
Just for information purposes, we don't need to have any discussion on that either more than anybody. I know we talked about it, but it was very good when we found the critical committee if. No, no, that would be a two hundred and fifty dollars provided by state to continue what it is. Partner that will probably only reach those.
We have a motion, have a second. To add this to the agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing non-motion carries. Add it to the agenda.
Yes. I salute that we adopted agenda as read. Who's attend?
Second.
Alright, it's been moved a second that we adopt the agenda with the addition of constant agenda item 3F. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, nay. Hearing none motion carries. Alright. At this time, a point of pride, as you, if you have the agenda, you can see Carroll Junior High School and their 4H Club received a very high honor. I'm going to let them come up and tell you about it.
Y'all will have to forgive my additions. My presence up front.
Good evening. I have Chrisela Ard, Janaya Butler, and Latrinity Dunn with me from Carroll Junior High. Chrisela originally joining us from Royal Schelling as a member, and Latrinity now at Carroll High School as a football member, if we can get a call out there. I'm excited to share that Carroll Junior High School 4H has been named Rookie Club of the Year for the entire Walshy tall parish program. In their very first year, this club jumped in with energy and creativity decorating pumpkins, planning for achievement day, designing a club t-shirt, and even taking a field trip to the agricultural and natural science museums in Jackson, Mississippi. Students also stepped into leadership. Trinity Dunn earning enough points as a junior leader to join us on a trip to Great Wolf Lodge. And Janaya Butler proudly representing the club by attending challenge camp at Seeker Springs. But most impressively, Carroll Junior High's service project, the Crown and Care Closet, was chosen as the top project in the parish and went on to receive the Youth Service America National Grant for Global Youth Service Day. This grant will allow the closet to expand from just clothing, which is what the school already had in place, to also include hair care, personal hygiene, and other essential items for students in need. I also want to add, Latrinity Dunn was the brainchild of this project, so I'm really glad she could join us. For all these accomplishments, Carroll Junior High has more than earned the title of Rookie Club of the Year. We're so proud to have them and excited to see what they do next. I do want to thank Ms. Neal from Carroll Junior High for allowing us in and making sure that this club has happened again this year. Ladies, would y'all at least introduce yourself? Latrinity does not want to talk.
I'm the chain of security.
Janaya Butler.
Chrisela Ard.
Would you like to take a picture with anything? Are there four of yous? One, one more, recognition. Carroll High School Medical Magnet Program recognition. Rosalyn Lloyd. Chiswick, yes, or it.
Good evening. Hi, Rosalyn Lloyd Chiswick. Look what voice I have, and I'm trying to tell you all about our super medical program. I'm very honored to be here tonight at our one of the students between Carol Robinson. So, what the Medical Magnet Program is, is a combination of programs that are housed at Carroll High School. We actually have several different disciplines where you can get certifications. I happen to be the program coordinator for the Certified Nurses Assistant part of that program. And with, I see one of the members up there that knows that I was director of ambulatory surgery for twenty first years at Conway. So, it's no surprise we didn't begin a survey, one commission has come in on several, again number of times. So, this year, I did have the survey from the state, and I'm happy to report that not only did they find our program compliance, but they found it in substantial compliance. So, very happy. Now, one deficiency and how one plan correction, everything was good about it. So, just to say a little bit though about Medical Magnet, we have several, what we consider our prerequisite courses that the students must take, must take before they actually qualify to get into one of the programs where they can get a certification. Because we bumped our first of those subjects down to the junior high level, that allows our students to come into Carroll High School just for the seventh prerequisite. That happens when they're in ninth grade, so they can actually leave high school, you know, with three different certifications because ten of them are in the first grade that can get certifications, and many of them are doing that. This particular student, I became the program coordinator this past midterm. This particular student, Cara, when we went to take our certification exam for the first time in the history of the program, and I don't mean just at Carroll, I'm talking about Nurses Assistant testing, she missed one question on her state certification exam. So, she was able to do every skill to their liking the first time around. I just want to add just a little bit and say that certifications for CNAs are not people thinking more. Where we, even as nurses, only take a written portion of a test, they have to take a state certification exam, the national computer, the written portion, and they also have to do skills return demonstrations to the liking of the person that's in the university. So, this is not easy feat, and when you go in and you don't repeat anything, and you miss one question, you deserve to stay here with me. So, if you could, please. I'm a student. I just wanted to be here tonight, is working, and one of these students are, and these clinical sites, they're asking me as soon as you can graduate or anything. So, I've got a student now who just got a $3,000 sign with us, who is a singer, and she's making $17 an hour by working as a CNA, and she's also a part of our royal court, so she got another engagement tonight. But I did want to just come in, thank you all for allowing us to have this program and supporting us, and we'll keep coming back very much.
I think I know the answer to the question, but how many other Medical Magnet programs in high school exist in the state of Louisiana?
I think that answer is, but you were about to form.
Correct.
This is a unique program.
It's the only one, has been my understanding, so that's wonderful.
And CNA is one facet. We have dental assistance, we've got, well, we did have sports medicine, hopefully we bring it back. We actually have EMR, several dozen things that we've had over the periods in term. We had pharmacy day, I know she was very disappointed that we didn't have it this year because they had started, she and several other students had actually started preparing for it, her sister was pharmacist, and I know she didn't get a certification for it, so hopefully we did that once.
That's awesome. And also, primary health, okay, are they working in coordination with you? Because that was one of the stipulations when they went on campus over Carroll, near Carroll Junior High, that that would be something they would incorporate, a scholarship program and things of that nature with the Medical Magnet. Has that happened?
No, the scholarship program has not happened to my knowledge.
So, you and I need to get together, make sure that that does happen. Give us a list and order on that.
Absolutely. We do use them for our students' physicals. We have to send them there for physicals, and some don't realize the timeframe that that takes, but we have to send them through to physicals and that, to get a TV spin test or anything. We do use them for that, but yes, we would definitely want to move forward with the other.
And October thirty first, y'all have that on your calendar for B P O M?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I helped them with that setup, so yeah.
Right. Yes.
Mr. Chiswick, Cara, would you stand there, we're definitely going to pull the ground.
Yeah.
Thank you, God.
Most to accept, uh, the agenda, please. Most to accept it, as soon as I know, I have been through it.
Second.
Alright.
Yeah, we're just taking A, B, C, D, and E together.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing the constant introduction. Alright, member four is the constant items for separate consideration, and this has to do with the renewal, the cooperative endeavor agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of North Louisiana. The supporting documents were posted to board docs with all of the details. So, we had this partnership as a, alright, it's been moved a second. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none motion carries. We're at five A, our new business item, the millage renewal and the resolution calling the election. And we have with us our public finance attorney, Bill Bones. Would you like to accept it, say aye?
Certainly. Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
All chapter, what we have tonight is a consideration of calling an election for renewals of the two existing adware millage taxes. One is fourteen point four one mils property tax for operations and maintenance. This will be, I think, the second time that's been offered a mill, a ten year tax, operation and maintenance, and others, six point one four mils property tax for ten, ten years, both of these, and that is for additional aid and support with schools, and this will be, it's on the ballot, it says on May thirtieth, but one, I think we have changed that, I'm probably not that that's supposed to be, we've done this for April, for the April election. So, that is what, that correction there, so that was what we discussed, and that's what we changed, stay on, and then with the notice, so consistent with the election laws tonight, you recall the election, and then we would add a, and then the election would take place in April, the post-election of next year, which is also the party primaries for the Senate and Congress elections, and a couple other things too, but primarily that's going to be a full calendar next year of all the primaries and runoffs. And so, these are renewals, it's the exact same village ten years ago. I commented, I think to you about how unusual it is for the current year to be doing roll ups and roll ups. You stand at the same village and things not being rolled up, so it's good, that y'all are even at the same village rate that was the last ten years, so. But that's, that's it, unless you have any questions.
Well, Mr. Bones, for application for those students that may not be familiar with the term adware, that's basically property tax, it's out of the real estate, so.
And it is a renewal, it's not a new tax.
Renewal, everything, the language is the same, the rate is the same, the term is the same.
Any questions for the board members? Alright, from the public?
Mr. President.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Matt. Just, we'd like, I know we can't ask questions, but I think it would be very helpful for we, the public, you just did a safety study, and you're going to be looking at facilities and what's needed there, that if we, the public, could see, what are the projects that you are proposing to use this money for? It's not, you know, just maintenance and operations, or is it, say, if you want to improve that air conditioning system, we, the public, would be really pleased to see what, what are your priorities there, and to see where that money will be spent. And the second thing I didn't quite understand in the last second proposition is, it says, and so you cannot use this money for professional staff. Would you explain that to me?
Attorney for.
This language, I think, was, it was on, put on the board at the time, well, typically when we talk about professional staff, we're talking about those who are certificated, who have teacher certification versus classified employment. Now, we do have some who are classified, who also possess some level of space certain interest, so that's typically what, what that means and what we're talking about.
So, then, this money can only be used for, like, running schools, maintenance, that, not anything else. Well, again, thank you, Madam Chair.
That's the part of the law.
But we would really appreciate, you know, after you've gone through your safety study, worked at your schools, what are your needs, we would appreciate a list that shows you how you're going to spend that. And then, the supporting documents, our old board doc lists how it's to be used.
There is a supporting document that specifies how the money will be used. Bill, do you have a comment?
No.
Okay.
Try to answer this question.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Alright.
Point of clarification, how the money would be used, I believe this customer is referring to specific, you know, projects, and that's not out there because we haven't made that decision, but if you're talking in broad scheme, I would assume.
Exactly. The law, the law's there.
As far as parameters and what money can be spent towards.
Exactly. Alright, Bill, you have additional comments? Do you like to make any questions for this? Alright, thank you. Alright, so, we need a motion. Alright, it's been moved a second that the millage renewal resolution calling election, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none motion carries. By B, engagement of a design professional for Carroll High School Chicken Booth Project. Just a minute. Uh, Colonel Lawrence, would you like to comment on this?
Well, I wanted to make sure y'all had background information on the three fathers and executive summary, and if you remember, I think it was in our last meeting, the architect we had for the project withdrew from the project and said they were no longer interested in it, and so that's the reason why I decided it's only the agenda is for the Carroll High School Chicken Booth Project. And so, when we say designer professional, we're talking about architects and engineers. So, the architect that we need for that project, we need to appoint someone else, and at this point, there needs to be a motion from the board to authorize us to engage someone else in the project.
President.
Last time, we had the meeting, last time, we said we were going to take three estimates or quotes from three different architects to do that project, what we said at the last meeting. Have we done that?
I don't know. Now, let me say this, and I think I mentioned this, you can, you can do that, you can get the, but I want to remind y'all, there is a law that took place this year, that says you cannot appoint architects based on who has the right.
That's right. We can get prices from them.
Yes. That's right.
So, it says that we're going to take prices from three architects within the SAG company.
At this point, I don't mean, you know, if they haven't been done, it's time to appoint an architect. So, right now, this board needs to appoint an architect, we need to vote, and we need to move forward with it, because we let it, we let it go the last time. So, at this point, representatives from Carroll, yourself, or whomever on this board, make a decision, and let's vote.
I would like to. Move that, 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 that point. Mr. Matt Lawrence from Jackson, Mississippi, as architect of the project.
I would like to make a motion to appoint TBA local contractor architect here in town.
So, it's two.
Alright. Alright, we have a motion to.
We need to vote on each one.
We need to vote on each one. We have a motion to authorize McEvoy to do the project. Alright, all in favor?
Madam President, they got to be a roll call vote because they got to be a separate vote.
Right. Alright, we'll have a roll call vote.
We have a discussion.
But let's have a discussion. Board members?
I would like to keep the money local with our local design architects, TBA's a local architect, they've done several projects for us here at the Monroe City School District, and I think they've done an excellent job in that project. We have had zero, small to zero problems with them doing punch lists at the end of the project on the day before Carroll High School. And I would like Carroll to get comfortable, like, that architect to go and perform the job there.
Same, Mr. Matt Lawrence, Mr. Matt Lawrence, in most of our schools, in some parts of the city, and they are much, the designs are beautiful, so I would like for us to continue to continue with him as well, and he will certainly give some big picture.
Would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. TBA Studios, Tim Brandon, they are preeminent health of school, educational architect in northeast Louisiana, their headquarters here locally. They have done phenomenal work, have been always fair in their pricing, and we have several Carroll alumni here that have not been very pleased with the architectural work that's occurred in some recent projects, and I can recommend TBA without a doubt as being one, if not the best, one of the best architectural firms locally, so.
Alright.
Madam President, what's, and this probably gives a question for Dr. Washington, what's the budget per project?
Two hundred and fifty. And is the limit eight percent per project for architectural fees? Is the limit for architectural project eight percent?
We've been doing seven and, seven and a half percent.
Okay, but I thought, I, they, it may be, I just know this door. No more than. Right, right, right.
Okay, any, any comments from the public?
I wanted to say.
Governor Smith, get up to the mic, please.
Madam President, with all due respect, if they didn't sign up to speak, it's.
How do you? She did. Okay. Mr. Lawrence answered most of my questions that I had, but I do have another question. Is there a stipulation where when land pulled out of the agreement, was there any kind of penalty that they should be accessing? Because, I mean, they are putting us behind. This was a approved, issue that was approved in twenty twenty four. So, this twenty twenty five, break their contract, do they have any obligations?
At, at this point, in their communication to us, they said that they were walking away, they said that the design work that they've done thus far, that we, that we owed them no money for. They also said, that's their intellectual property, we're not free to structure our building using their intellectual property. So, we don't owe them anything.
there is a, a law that took place this year, which says you cannot appoint architects based on who has the right.
That's right. We can get prices from them.
Yes.
Seven percent.
That's right.
So it says that we're going to take prices from three architects within the SAG from there?
At this point, I don't mean, you know, if they haven't been done, it's time to appoint an architect. So right now, this board needs to appoint an architect, we need to vote, and we need to move forward with it. Uh, because we let it, we, we let it go the last time. So at this point, representatives from Carol, yourself, or whomever on this board, uh, make a decision and let's vote.
I would like to. Move that, 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 that point. Uh, Mr. Mappelroy from Jackson, Mississippi, as architect of the project.
I would like to make a motion to appoint TBA local contractor, architect here in town.
So there's two.
All right. All right, we have a motion to, um.
We need to vote on each one.
We need to vote on each one. We have a motion to authorize, um, McElroy to do the project. All right, um, all in favor?
Madam President, they gotta be a roll call vote because they gotta be a separate vote.
Right. All right, we'll have a roll call vote. But let's have a discussion. Board members?
Uh, I would like to keep the money local with our local, uh, design architects, TBA's a local architect. They've done several projects for us here at the Monroe City School District. And I think they've done an excellent job in each of the projects. We have had zero, small to zero problems with them doing punch lists at the end of the project on the day before Carol High School. And I would like Carol to get comfortable, like, that architect to go and perform the job there.
All right.
Same, Mr. Mappelroy, Mr. Rappelroy, they're most of our schools in some part of the city. And they are much, they're, they're, the designs are beautiful. So I would like for us to continue to continue with him as well, and he will certainly give some big picture.
All right.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. TBA Studios, Tim Brandon, they are preeminent, um, health of school, uh, educational architect in northeast Louisiana, their headquarters here locally. Um, they have done phenomenal work, have been always fair in their pricing. And we have several Carol alumni here that have not been very pleased with the architectural work that's occurred in some recent projects. And, uh, I can recommend TBA without any doubt as being one, be, if not the best, one of the best architectural firms locally, so.
All right.
Madam President, what, what's, and this probably gives a question for, uh, Dr. Watson, what, what's the budget per project?
Two hundred fifty. And is the limit eight percent per project for architectural fees?
Is the limit for architectural project eight percent?
We've been doing seven and, seven and a half percent.
Okay, but I, I, I.
It may, it may be, I just know this door.
No more than.
Right, right, right.
All right.
Okay, any, any comments from the public?
I wanted to say.
Attorney Smith, get up to the mic, please.
Madam President, with all due respect, if, if they didn't sign up to speak, it's.
How do you? She did.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence answered most of my questions that I had, but I do have another question. Um, is there a stipulation where when land pulled out of the agreement, um, was there any kind of penalty that they should be, uh, excessive? Because, I mean, they are putting us behind. Uh, this was a, uh, approved, uh, issue that was approved in twenty twenty four.
That's right.
So this twenty twenty five, so break their contract, do they have any obligations?
At, at this point, in their, uh, communication to us, they said that they were walking away. They said that, uh, the design work that they've done thus far, that we, that we owed them no money for. They also said, that's their intellectual property, we're not free to structure our building using their intellectual property. So we don't owe them anything. At this point, it's a clean break, unless there's something else to come up. There's not, but we hold down the bare watch.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, all right, so, um, we, we have a motion in a second.
Yes. Who else got to speak? Who else signed? Anybody else signed up to speak?
No.
No one else signed up to speak. All right, now we'll have a vote. All right. Uh, roll call, please.
Which one is this for?
This is for, uh, McElroy.
Okay. Mr. Sampanero?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Against.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
In favor.
Ms. Allen?
In favor.
Ms. Cooper?
In favor.
Four in favor, two opposed.
Do we have a vote on the other, just for record purposes?
All right. I don't think so.
I make the motion.
I'll say it.
All right, a motion, a, um, a motion in a second has been made. All in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
What, hold up, what are we both doing?
Putting the record to TBA's vote.
Ms. Lawrence, is this being?
I think that's, I think it's decided at this point. And we are, and there's no quotas that we've done, and I don't know what, what purposes it serves record. I'm just, I'm standing over time, man, it's a great, y'all back.
It is legal if you want to do it, the motion been made in second.
We will move on, um, we're at. This is, we're at reports now, and the report of superintendent at this time.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Our rules order, um, there was a motion made in second for the vote, the TBA. So unless, I didn't hear a vote against, uh, that motion.
I'll, I'll say that. We've been taking that vote. It was not a vote to reconsider the previous question, so it will not undo what's already been decided.
Exactly.
But if you, if you want to have that vote, vote regardless of what the outcome is.
For recognition purposes?
All right.
Yes. So we need to proceed with the vote, the motion that he seconded, and we know, um, it was in favor of the motion, so we need to go ahead and have the second vote, knowing that it will pass, so we'll go ahead and ask.
All right. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think that was a motion in the second, or is it what Mr. Wilson said, I think it was the second, narrow second, I believe.
That's right.
So, you know, the only other thing to do at this point, if, if you're gonna have the votes, you have to vote, so.
All right.
But I.
All right, motion and a second is made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Hey.
Nay. And, um, motion doesn't pass.
No, this roll call, we do vote against, and you know, it's.
Five, three days.
You didn't speak, that's why.
All right, we can have a roll call, it's another party. All right, um.
No, that's fine, we'll let it go.
No, we're gonna have a roll call. One, please.
Mr. Sampanero? Mr. Sampanero? Mr. Wilson?
In favor.
Mr. Berry?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
In favor.
In favor?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Allen?
Oppose.
Ms. Cooper?
Oppose.
Three in favor, and three?
Motion does.
Report of superintendent.
Report.
A good evening. Uh, of course, we, we had our financial report during our financial meeting. Uh, it was not much, much change. One of the questions that came, uh, that was asked, was asked about the reports that are given, that's all the information that's given. And the response was that when board members request additional information, we give that additional information. In fact, uh, we shared about, worked with you guys the other day, about eighty plus line items with additional information. So they answered that question, uh, that was shared with the board members in the email. It was forty five attachments, thirteen attachments, and then with the latest, so we can feel that financial portion. Uh, I want to go to our academic team updates. Uh, the academic team has made significant progress, we're building approximately half of our school campuses. These businesses have, uh, provided an opportunity to share additional initiatives with teachers and gather valuable feedback. Interactions have been instrumental in aligning our initiatives with, uh, classroom needs and teacher perspective. Uh, in fact, when those meetings, we come back and, and there are some things that, that the academic team is looking to, uh, expand the, the scope of autonomy with schools based on performance to allow them to do certain things, uh, on their campus that they will take ownership and responsibility for. Uh, our K three teacher focus group, uh, we're in the process of scheduling a focus group specifically for K three teachers. This group will discuss curriculum concerns with special emphasis on assessments. The goal is to ensure all our assessment methods effectively support learning, uh, without placing undue burden on teachers and students. Our DIBELS and, uh, high doses tutoring updates, beginning of the year DIBELS assessments, have been successfully conducted, and also we saw a people's five percent increase in our beginning of the year DIBELS assessment versus, uh, last year. Additionally, cycle one of our high doses tutoring is underway. Uh, this cycle targets students who score below and well below benchmark, as well as those students who are not efficient on the spring leap assessment. Uh, with our new accountability administration, basic and approaching basic, basic is no more. Uh, being inefficient is what the state has targeted us with. We get our talented art testing, uh, this week. This week, elementary students who qualify complete talented art testing, we're excited to identify and nurture artistic talent within our student body and provide them with necessary resources to thrive. Our Twenty First Century After School Learning, uh, the Twenty First Century After School Learning Program will be hosting phase one of lights on after school in partnership with the Children's Coalition and the Louisiana Purchase Gardens and Zoo. Uh, the event will take place at the Louisiana Purchase Garden and Zoo, and will include various activities to engage and enrich our students outside of regular school hours. Uh, this event has been going on since the, since we've had Twenty First Century. It's been going on for years, and we will continue that. Uh, also, I share with, with the board, uh, Monroe City School, uh, recent recognition at our last, uh, L D O E, uh, call with our state superintendent, K, wrong, we were recognized for having forty five percent of our students complete three or more lessons, uh, per week for ZERN. Only ten school districts in the state, uh, receive their recognition. With our ZERN initiative, uh, this is an initiative that's really, uh, pushed by our state superintendent. And, uh, we've, we've been on board with that because research shows that students that get, uh, those three lessons, uh, for ninety minutes a week, they show a five point seven increase on their state testing, uh, this is what the data shows. Um, so we were recognized, uh, by the state department for that. Uh, now, talent and nutrition, um, now, of course, we talked earlier about our guidelines for bids for our R and P, for our cafeterias for our three high schools, and we're going alphabetical order. Carol High School followed by Melmore High School, followed by Watson High School. Uh, Madison James Foster was recognized as our cafeteria of the month, and our custodian department, uh, uh, N L K, Watson King Junior Junior High School was recognized as our facility of the month. In the warehouse, we're looking at, continuing at the feasibility of purchasing shipping label scanners to ensure the accuracy of contents of our packages from Amazon and other shipping services. And this is important, we talked about this in past board meetings, because our staff is really logged down with opening every single box that comes into the warehouse, and that delays things getting out to our schools. So we're looking at a way to try to streamline that process. Uh, and our HVAC department, uh, systems have been repaired at Shilling, however, uh, it, it, it has persistent issues. One of the main issues at Shilling is on the second floor, there are no air conditioning ducts in the hallways. And so we're looking at that, and we're also looking, and Scotty talked about, and some of the things we're looking to do. Uh, we're looking at, uh, with, with, with our needs assessment, looking at the, taking bids to look at moving from that four pipe system to the possible two pipe system because of, you know, that'll be expensive. And I also spoke with Mr. Sampanero, who said he feels that there's a way we can do that, that's, uh, a less expensive way. Uh, and we're with some controls, so we're gonna look at that because, and what that means to the public is that when we go from cold weather to hot weather, we don't have the ability just to automatically switch over because of that old system that was in place. And so we're gonna, uh, uh, ask for your expertise, Mr. Sampanero, as I talked to you about that before. So look at ways to possibly try to, uh, make that happen for our school system. In our maintenance department, a bright solution is in the process of installing and training users for the automated ticketing system. Uh, we talked about that in the past, and our next implementation meeting will be the week of October twentieth. Uh, and of course, uh, we've also taken care of, uh, the architect for the ticket booth. Uh, our needs assessment, uh, we heard, uh, the last board, last facility, uh, in reference to our needs assessment. So hopefully we'll be moving forward. Uh, in our areas of safety, listening to the concerns of the public. Pardon me, uh, we've had several meetings with law enforcement. Uh, we met with, uh, Chief Big Jordan, uh, the chief of the Monroe Police Department. Uh, we also met with, uh, uh, our, our, our chair as well, uh, Sheriff Shaw, and also have a meeting scheduled with, uh, uh, Marshal Cherry, uh, as well. Uh, we met with, uh, Watch Our Parents Sheriff, and their system is, is a really innovative system that we looked at. And he, does he share with us ways that we can make our system more efficient and more safe without necessarily adding physical bodies, a way that they can tap into our system, and they can be able to see real time, so we're looking at implementing that. We're working with Aaron Dakota, our I D, I T department for that as well. We've also started, uh, some off duty details, like a lot of people are calling, uh, school recess officer, but we do have off duty details that we've, uh, implemented at four by elementary schools. Um, and those four schools are Lexington Elementary School, uh, and also, uh, Sally Uomo Elementary School, Royde Rochelle Elementary School, and also Burdell Lane's Elementary School. And, and they're doing morning and afternoon details, and, and after meeting with the chief, Big Jordan, uh, while they're on their regular detail route, they're walking our schools and, and, and making certain that our schools are safe. So we, we're phasing that in, uh, and we're also looking to add additional schools as well. I think our big piece will be adding with the sheriff department to really tap in, to make it see real time to keep our schools safe. Uh, in, in our transportation department, uh, the district purchased the trip finder system, and we are working, uh, to complete the implementation of that trip finder system. And, and also, I just want to share, um, you know, it's, it, it's really disheartening, um, to me, I'm just gonna speak personally, it's disheartening to see the community that continues to be so divided, racially divided, when we should, when we should be about schools. Uh, there are a lot of people in our community that, that seem to visit with other districts about Monroe City Schools. They're even turning us into the Department of Education and doing all those things that are counterproductive to what we're trying to do. I can tell you one thing for certain, uh, there was still one die, ever, from this school system. I will always operate with integrity in this school system, and I will not mistreat any kid in our school system. It doesn't matter if they're white, if they're black, I'm here to serve kids, and kids only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this time, um, we need, uh, to follow the, anything that the issue, we'd like to add. All right, we're on, uh, we're, we're board members.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam President. Uh, like to, uh, first of all, thank our staff, as always, uh, for the hard work that you all are doing, and for y'all being present, and helping this ship stay afloat. Uh, if Mr. Moore can't do it alone, I think he's built an incredible team, and what y'all are doing is showing. You know, and I appreciate it, you know, sometimes, uh, the fight get hard, but we gonna fight together. Uh, and also, thank, uh, our baby school, Watson High School, uh, it's always good to see, uh, my school show up, show out, so I appreciate y'all for coming, uh, to color board, and also make sure y'all do what y'all do. Y'all really look nice. All ladies at that, y'all really look, really, really nice. Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna let you share.
Yes, so, first of all, before you go, uh, Ms. Moore, we've been friends and known each other for about twenty six years.
Yes.
And I've never known you to treat people differently based on color. You know, the color that matters to us is green. Color money, so to speak. No, seriously, though. So I don't know where that's coming from, but, uh, the Sam Moore I know is not like that. I know, so I just want that on record publicly, um, so, anyway. Uh, so to my report, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, um, project I've been working with Louisiana Blue Cross and Blue Shield the last couple of years is a medical, uh, project to work with local elementary schools and providing winter coats for each of their students. And last year, Michael Sampanera and I, wherever we get together, uh, at Cypress Point Elementary, and, uh, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shields, Louisiana Blue Cross Blue Shield stepped up, provided about thirty or so volunteers to provide winter coats for all their students this year. They came to me again, and I said, well, how about J S Carr Magnet Elementary School, that's our top performing elementary school academically in our system. And so on, uh, September twenty fourth, they came to J S Carr. They provided over thirty of their own employees, volunteers for the program. And, uh, I invited, uh, our superintendent, Sam Moore, and, uh, we were able to give some, uh, words as appreciation for the program to Louisiana Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I just want to thank them publicly again for stepping up and being a corporate partner, and that's one thing, uh, Mr. Moore and I have talked about, is trying to get, you know, our board members to work more, bringing in corporate development, working hand in hand with our school systems, being an adoptive school. Um, I, I was able to get my bank, uh, Century Next Bank, to adopt J S Carr, uh, Elementary School, uh, as a adoptive school, and I know you're very familiar with that process. Uh, but, uh, anyway, just want to encourage everyone to continue to, to look into that. Also, uh, in that vein, uh, VCOM, uh, we, we know that's the new medical, uh, school here next to the campus or on the campus in northeast, excuse me, U L M, University of Louisiana Monroe. But this is an incredible, uh, institution that we are very fortunate to have in Monroe, Louisiana. And I got to thinking about trying to take our Carol High School Medical Magnet program, the only one in the state of Louisiana, and seeing if we could partner with VCOM to some, VCOM to some degree to work collaboratively, not only with Carol High School and their Medical Magnet, but also have our junior high and high school kids start thinking about potential careers in medicine, in the medical field. Because as we know, if you want to aspire for certain heights, you gotta start in, in early. If you fail to plan, I'm, I'm a big believer that you plan to fail, uh, so to speak. So anyway, uh, we, uh, met, uh, with, um, uh, Dr. Ray Morrison, who's very involved in our community. He's over the VCOM program. By the way, VCOM, and I didn't know this until we started talking, stands for Edward Via College of Osteopathic Medicine. So for those interested that might care, but nonetheless, tremendous program. This is their fourth campus nationwide that they have. And, uh, also, uh, Dr. Jonah Flowers, we met with. And so I was able to get Century Next Bank to sponsor two programs, one for Carol High School, October thirty first, for their, uh, students, uh, that the, the high school dean is eligible to attend, because we want this to be an honor, uh, for them to go and, and participate. It's a two hour program. They go through five stations, and they, they focus on, uh, trying to promote health awareness prevention of middle and high school students, uh, and then introduce and encourage students in the needle region to pursue careers in health science. So, uh, that's gonna be October thirty first, we're looking for a good turnout. I met with, uh, Mr. Moore, and we're gonna provide the buses to go there, and it'll be done in the morning since the assembly, a pep rally for homecoming is gonna, not homecoming, but for that game, it's gonna be that afternoon. And then on November twenty first, Neville Junior High, uh, will be going, uh, for their tour of VCOM. So just kind of wanted to report back and give an update on that.
All right, thank you, boys. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson, is the public invited?
Uh, no, not to this, because of such a time constraint, and, and, uh, but you know what? Just ever, if you would like a tour, I can line that up for you.
Okay, thank you.
Seriously, and I mean that.
Okay.
Simple.
We're moving in second that we adjourn, all in favor, please say aye. I propose a motion.
Well, I need the first one, huh?
Yes.